Let's go ahead and start at six o'clock and welcome. Call the order and roll call.
Councilmember Compton. Emily Baker, here. Farrell, there. Kathy.
Here.
Keller.
Here.
Miller.
Excuse.
Aaron Fallon, here. Janice Crane, here. Sophie Harbaugh.
Here.
Sarah Patrick.
Here.
Emily Sealy, there. Heather Weaver.
Excuse.
Karen Moore.
Excuse. Introductions. I didn't hear something. Oh. All right, well, I'll go first. Actually, I will go ahead and start and that's a, that's a question. So, thank you all for coming to meet tonight and have the joint session. This is to get everyone on the same page about what's happening with the Tourism Committee and what's happening with City Council. Make sure that all of the goals are aligned and everyone knows each other and we're in a good place. My name is Janice Crane. I'm the Executive Director of the City of Congress Historic Committee which is your vendor for Tourism Administrative Services and Desert Betterment Services. And I'm happy to be here tonight.
My name is Emily Sealy. I'm the Chair of the Tourism Committee. I have been here in town for the last two and a half years and just really want to help be a part of our community and help build our community inside and out.
We introduce and all those.
Well, we can just go each.
All back up and I'm Kathy Fallon, there. Lived here for, gosh, since 2018. I purchased my home. Then you went.
All right, Pete Happy, City Council, moved here in 2018. And, yeah, well, just stay bucks.
No, I'm Sophie Harbaugh. I've been in Gaskell Locks since 2022. And I just wanted to be a part of the community.
And you have a tourism degree?
I do, yes.
Denise Emily Baker, City Council of 2020. And I'm excited about the things I'm seeing with tourism that's happening for today, including our surrounding community. It's always good for cross-promotion. And y'all know what you're doing.
Tamara Carroll, City Council, lived here in 1995, so old timer, seen less of changes, and good and bad. And I'm here to help.
Eric Heller, City Council, moved here in 2015.
Sarah Becker, living here, also since 1968. I've seen a lot of changes in the town also and, like I said, good and bad. But I'd like to see a lot more changes, you know, as far as your businesses and how we retail. That's what I'm, and beautification of the town, prudence, a lot of that. We got a whole place. We have none.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Jordan, want to introduce yourself or?
And please Debbie, in the corner.
Yeah, I'm Jordan, City Administrator. Been here for 15 months now, so.
You go.
You go.
Keep going. All right, so review of ordinance 259 and discuss roles and vulnerabilities. So, in your packet, you tried to pull text of the ordinance. Did you want to do a full meeting of this?
Um, I can. I did it for the planning commission. I have no problem. I think it helped people kind of get an understanding of what the roles were and then kind of good over discussion after the reading to make sure we're on the same page, but we need to get consensus from the very bottom of the table.
I like it.
So ordinance 259, ordinance creating a Tourism and Beautification Committee providing for the organization's continuance, powers and duties thereof, and meeting with ordinance 1 and ordinance 243. The City of Cascade Locks, the River County, Oregon, ordains as follows. Section 1, that there be and hereby is creating the Tourism and Beautification Promotion Committee of Cascade Locks, or in concept, being of seven persons. Will be appointed by the Mayor, subject to approval by the City Council, as herein provided. The term of office of all committee members shall be three years, but the terms of the first appointees to this position shall expire on the schedule below and/or to provide staggered terms in the future. Position 1, uh, you guys want to bring your positions?
No, no. No, you're good on there.
And existing members of the Tourism Committee and Beautification Committee shall have first choice of appointments by the Council. Section 2, the Committee shall hold a meeting at least once a month at other and at other times at any time and place designated by the Committee. Such meetings will be announced and open to public. For members of the Commission, shall be, shall constantly inform. Any member missing three meetings without permission shall be automatically removed from the Committee and replaced by Council Action. The Committee may have an alternate member without voting rights. The Committee shall organize by the election of the Chairman, Secretary and/or Treasurer from, from, should be from its members. The Chairman shall preside over all meetings. The Secretary shall keep minutes at each meeting. A copy of it shall be filed in the City Office. And the Treasurer shall be responsible for purchasing and the handling of any monies as authorized by the Council. Section 3, the duties of the Committee shall consist of the power and duty to advise City Council concerning the expenditure of city monies in the promotion of tourism and beautification. And more specifically, A, to devote due time and attention to the discharge of duties imposed upon it by provisions of this ordinance and heighten the awareness of both, both imposed upon it by provisions of this ordinance and heighten, it's repeating itself, or am I repeating myself?
No.
It's repeating itself.
Okay, make sure not go crazy. Height the awareness of both residents and potential visitors of the recreational and scenic qualities of Cascade Locks surrounding gorge areas. B, to recommend annually to the City Budget Officer and Budget Committee a plan of expenditures based on anticipated transient assessment receipts. C, to recommend to the Council and plan, to the Council, plan purchases and action deemed appropriate to promote tourism and beautification in the community. D, to hold public hearing or to otherwise solicit public participation, whenever necessary, with effective committee plan and program for tourism and beautification promotion. B, to make an annual report to the City Council at the time of the budget request submitted and such other reports as from time to time may be requested. Section 6, the actual application, management and direction of the program of Tourism and Beautification Promotion Plan by the Committee shall be the responsibility of the City Council, various elements of which they may choose to delegate to City Officers or others. Section 7, all funds budgeted and appropriated by the City of Cascade Locks for tourism and beautification promotion shall be spent in the same manner as our other city funds passed by City, passed by the Council approved by the Mayor December 5, 1988.
Oh, it's back and bold. Are you actually looking when you was on?
Um, you said, there's a document here for different. So one of the, our next documents in your packet was the Onboarding Packet, which is where we have drawn for, um, taking the ordinance and then the other laws that apply to tourism administration and for them to replace heading with a bullet pointed version of the ordinance. And the point of this is to help everyone understand exactly what the restrictions are on transient lodging tax funding and to make sure that the committee members know what their goals are and within the expectations of the City Council. And I had heard a couple of questions a little bit before the meeting too about how this works, so I was walking through this document. And I, we all understood that ordinance pretty straightforward, but I had a couple.
If you could go back to the ordinance, is that okay?
Yeah.
Can you explain what that means in this? Underneath the position says, existing members of the Tourism Committee and Beautification Committee shall have first choice of appointment by the Council. What does that mean?
Uh, Councilor Tamara had the same question via email. My guess is that those that are due for reappointment are at the top of the list for reappointment. That's my best guess, but being that it's back in 1988, I have no idea.
I, I would agree with you now that we discussed it. And now that I heard you read it, I'm like, oh, that's what it means. If you've already been on your first and less there.
I see, so if they want to be opted to go another term, they would have the first option for that, if that makes sense.
I don't know.
Oh, I got a few more questions.
My, the way that I read it is that there must have been a Tourism Committee and a Beautification Committee, and those two committees made up this committee. And if you had that, what are the positions you received? First choice, right?
That, no, that makes sense.
Right, so that was against.
Do you know anything about, um? There may be some doubts that need to be clarified.
But yeah, I didn't know what that meant. But I think as it stands now, it would make sense that if someone was on the Committee and they want to continue to serve, they would have a first option for opening up other appointments. There was, what does it mean? The Committee may have an alternate number without voting rights. What does that mean?
I know that in our committee documents on page 10 and 11 in our conference speakers, the Mayor can appoint a, um, the Mayor may appoint City Liaisons or representatives to all committees and tax forces for which participation of an elected appointed official is determined necessary beneficial. So I'm presuming it refers to that kind of person. Because it's in our standing procedures for all committees.
Section 2, the second paragraph, the final sentence, the Committee may have an alternate member without voting rights. Wouldn't, I don't know why you would have a member that didn't have voting rights.
My guess is to make a forum while having an extra person on the Committee. It's the only thing I think of.
If they have no voting rights, or wouldn't that, would they?
But is it, is it saying you have to seek their approval to make that decision even though they can't attend the meeting to have a voting right? Is that what they're implying there?
I don't know.
Like, that's what I understand.
I've talked about that before. It's pretty splendorsed. And I think that's, yeah, that's an extra person that could be there so we can have a forum to have the meeting. But as they are not an official member, they don't have the voting right. So they are just here to allow a meeting to happen.
But whereupon no decision is being made in voting. But I, I also see that it would fit this as well. The section 10 Committee, something would benefit to update this, hopefully consider clarifying.
Yeah.
Yeah, this was done in 1988.
And then my last question was that section 3 paragraph A where there's a repetitive language. Is that just a typo that was in this copy or is that actually in the?
Um, this one is actually in the ordinance. This is the original from 1988. It wasn't, I'm aware it wasn't retyped.
Got it. So it sounds like we maybe need to.
I put that in front of it.
Okay, this, the Tourism Committee was in the middle of rewriting this before all the changes happened this summer. So I don't know if you've seen any of your files, drafts. That was about ready to present to Council before all this change happened.
Got it. Well, that sounds like it, it maybe should be that. I think sorry.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm all finished. Thank you.
Okay. And I wanted to bring up that because we have, I think, fairly new Sophie's panel for Committee and last year's, please know that any ordinance change is possibly $500 of attorney fees. And, and just, so you know. And a lot of things we've been told are to interpretation of the Council and the Committees and if sometimes if we can agree on the interpretation. I sometimes hope to save that $500. But, um, but it is old language. We are, I don't think any of our planning money is changing ordinance.
It's not immediately updated.
But I, my question was, we just read an ordinance that includes creating tourism and beautification with language thereof, heretofore. Um, and there were some in the last Council who did not like the term beautification. It is a subjective term and can mean many things. And it would have cost us attorney money to change that. But the Council did vote to change it last year. According to the advice or recommendation of a former tourism person. And so if this group is in consensus that it doesn't need to be removed, that you don't see issue with beautification, then we can bring it before Council again. I don't know what y'all think.
The concern of that was the scope of funding. The previous Committee focused solely on TLT funds, which would could not be used for beautification per state law. Their scope of work did not deviate from those funding. They, until the very end, did not really go after grants or anything to be beautification. So that went away.
And I don't, I appreciate that and their past understanding of TLT funds. And I know that, I think Janice Crane has a very comprehensive understanding of TLT funds that she might take of this and the subjective term beautification. So we can come back around to that maybe after we talk about TLT funds.
The ordinance says, would everyone be in agreement since this is a 1988 document that it would be helpful to update it and change the language so it is clear and concise? So we're not, how do you feel about that, Janice?
We, you were working on it or? Um, I was not working on this. I have all of the old notes from the work that was completed on this.
Okay.
So I am happy to pick that up where they left off.
How does everyone feel about that?
Um, I don't know, maybe, because once we change one ordinance, we have to look at, because they fall under the same committee guidelines as are in our council procedures. So it's a lot of ordinance money and, and ordinance changes cost money and they take time at council meetings. So I don't see it as a high priority, but if they can operate as is until we do our budget planning personally, I would wait for budget. Yeah. Okay, we'll wait for budget then? On the, yes, thanks. The mix.
I don't think that the language of the ordinance is holding us back from.
Yeah, there's something about.
Right, no. So it's something to fix.
Yeah.
Eventually, I mean, it's, yeah.
I mean, the first. And we should all understand what the language is right now. It's not clear. But we understand what's there.
Mm-hmm. All right, Janice, all right. And so this Onboarding Packet was made at the request of some former committee members who had asked for clarification on what's the expectations were for a lot of the committees so that they could understand. And I think it's a good document for people who are coming into a new committee to just get a welcome and to get an understanding of what it means to really serve on a committee. And so this was adopted at the last business meeting of the Committee. And what we do through here, so welcoming everyone to the Committee, giving the history is really interesting. So Cascade Locks has had transient lodging tax for a lot longer than the State of Oregon has had rules about transient lodging tax. And so this Committee, having been formed in 1988, as, in having that, um, those taxes in place in 1982, was really ahead for what a lot of these TLT restrictions are. In 2005 is when the state, or sorry, 2003, um, the state implemented the statewide TLT and that's when all those rules come into play about what they can be spent on and how allocations happen within the cities. So, um, my understanding is that this 1980s laws got grandfathered in to the system. So anything that changes with these ordinance system could potentially impact how TLT funds are allocated and could impact how, um, what, like what percentages that the city gets towards general operations versus needing to spend on tourism promotion and tourism related activities. And, and so that's something that would need to be considered as well with any ordinance updates. Um, the big changes would be if you were ever to try to assess more tax and change the percentage that is collected. Um, or if the city was to opt to change the percentages for what is allocated. Um, currently, uh, the city is getting 70% of the TLT funding for general operations and the Committee is responsible for 30% of how, of the, the total TLT that's collected. The statewide regulation is reverse of that. So if anyone had new, like a, let's say a city made a new TLT and they've never had it before, um, they would only get 30% for their general apps and 70% would need to be spent on tourism promotion. Um, and so that is one of the really interesting things, but also something that needed to be clarified for this Committee. Because if you just go online and you Google, oh, TLT, how do I do this? What is my responsibility as a committee member? You're going to get different information from what applies here. And so in the appendix of this document, it's got all of the state rules and all of the city rules and, um, so that the committee members can easily reference those if they were to want to do that. And otherwise, they can read these little bullet points and know what really matters for the, uh, the function of the Committee. Um, so then all of those laws come together to make these little bullet points for you here. So we've got the responsibilities that were outlined in the, um, in the ordinance and the committee structure from the ordinance and what their requirements are for the meetings. It's all in the ordinance that we just ran. And the main responsibility of this Committee is that budget. So that is definitely something that we need to, um, kind of improve our practices on is making sure that the Committee is aware of what is in their budget and what the financial situation is with how they're spending their funds. Um, and then there's more welcome information for what the Committee is managing from a digital perspective, um, what the assets are as far as the website and the social media accounts and the range for Visit Cascade Locks. Those are all considered digital assets. And then there's more intro to tourism lingo and abbreviations. Because when you go to these bigger tourism meetings and stuff, you'll start hearing people throw around acronyms like, oh, NSA, DMO, these are all, um, like, it's alphabet soup. Uh, so making sure that folks are ready to, um, to discuss this stuff means that they need to understand the language. Um, so, uh, there's a little glossary in here and then also organizations and contacts that we can work collaboratively with. So who do we talk to at Travel Oregon? Who is our Regional Destination Management Organization? Um, what are these other networks that we're part of? Who are the changers that we work with? Who are the ODOT people that we work with? Um, making sure that committee members have access to that information.
I see that. We're all up to date then as far as, yeah.
As far as I know, yes, I, this was written in December and adopted at the January meeting. So I'm not an attorney, but I can copy paste from the law to.
This is a beautiful Onboarding Packet and a model for other Committees. Thank you. Um, it's a long time coming and I think that, uh, without such an Onboarding Packet has led to maybe some past confusion. And I know, I, I concur with you about the TLT funds. I did go to a seminar on the League of Oregon Cities Conferences. And in my mind, our being grandfathered in is a good thing. Now, tourism and beautification may not think so, in my mind, because the city has more ability to use those funds. And Janice is correct that there is a lot of misinformation in the community about that and a lot of opinions that will. So thank you for showing the proof at the end event.
Yeah, I think that was some of the more helpful feedback from, um, previous committee members was where the points of confusion were so that we could fix it so it wasn't confusing anymore.
Right.
So I guess I, I was curious, you know, imagining they put these rules in place for a reason and they do deal with statewide, the 37th split was the number, they said, and on statewide. We don't have to follow because we're grandfathered before that. But I'm wondering, you're saying it would be like it's a benefit to the city because it gives us more flexibility with how that money is spent versus if it was under tourism. So my question is, if this sort of flip-flop, what would be the impact on the city and how would that affect tourism?
Uh, we would have a much larger advertising budget. Um, and you would have a much smaller operating budget.
I, how many dollars are you talking about?
About 70 grand, everything.
How much of an impact to the city is that?
It's a possession.
But I guess, is it wrong for us to be depriving tourism of the additional $190 so that we can pad our operational budget for the city? You know, these are, shouldn't we be supporting the city operations through other revenue generating activities that the city is engaged in?
I'll agree, yeah, that's, you, up to Council, I don't want to do that. We, I can run numbers in there.
I don't know. I mean, I'd be just curious to hear with the, you know, specifically you and tourism had, you know, how would that look to both of you if that were to shift in flip-flop? Would that be a good thing for tourism?
Well, definitely be a good thing for tourism. But would it be something that a city would be able to handle based on the history of using that money?
And our budget, remember the budget process wins. Currently having one of the lowest paid fire chiefs and EMS staff in the area. Um, I wouldn't want to change it yet. And there are cool things happening to benefit tourism, Main Street organizing and, um, and I think, um, I'm hoping the joint partnership with the port, not partnership officially, but discussions with the port and the city. The port who also does events and promotion and tourism with the city and Tourism Committee and a new onboarding of Main Street will help with some of this, is what I'm hoping. And right now, we don't have, we still have the old ordinance that we can't raise taxes or that old, I don't know what it's called, non-ordinance taxes or fees.
Charter.
Charter. Um, and we are, we know how tight our budgets, we saw that in the last class. But it's a good, it's a good point. Um, but for small, we are a very small city when I listen to other cities at these meetings. Um, that, you know, can benefit. And amid that, I don't know about you, but I remember the Mayor of Sioux Side said they use TLT funds to build the conference center. Um, and sure, that'd be great. And yet we have a port that we can talk to if that's something we want as well. And we have, you know, hopefully, Main Street will help. Anyway, down the road, that might be good, but I imagine what you're saying, Janice, too, is whether the state changes it or not, there's no going back. There's no flip-flopping. Once you switch, you switch.
But the state can't force us. We're grandfathered.
We're grandfathered, yeah, right.
They, they can't. That'll be a decision that we get to make. But I guess, you know, I just wanted to kind of have a discussion of what, you know, what would that look like? And, you know, that I imagine that those percentages were picked for a reason when they put this program together. And I don't necessarily think the right answer is, well, we can't afford to operate the city without it. I think we should try to figure out a way to make it so that we could operate the city with the correct allocation percentages.
And you make a good point that the Tourism Committee, when they're making their goal setting based on our goal set and budget, they could ask for more. I mean, they can always ask to, to try, could we, um, begin, you know, to sell that point that it's helping benefit the city. Um, but with all the infrastructure we've done, which is benefiting tourism and all the, with the city money, the city side of that, I could say that probably that $70,000 a year has gone toward projects that benefit tourism.
Believe in our fire chief, right?
Right, you can't have people at the motels and hotels that there's no clean water or waste system. So, um, in our streets and our sewage plant. So, um, and in some of these meetings that I went to in the past, they did talk about the state is actually beginning to expand their definition of what you can do with that large amount of TLT funds because cities are saying, we can't, we can't get more visitors here because our infrastructure won't support it. So even to. So even that packet that's that bunch of money that's allowed for tourism. Is being spent on some of these things there because the the state is changing those guidelines. As they begin to expand their definition of what is needed for beds and heads. To get people from fifty miles here, stay the night and leave a good review, not a bad review. Anyway.
But I think, you know, what I hear you saying is that they potentially, when we're doing our budget requests, the tourism could ask for more funding. And because we have that discretionary ability that allocate, we could choose to. Put, provide them with more than thirty percent of the T L T funds, yeah, we could put it in their budget. So I guess the benefit of having the flexibility and us being able to decide that it's supposed to be dictated by the state. Thanks, that's just my questions.
All right, um so the next thing that is on the agenda was um. The disrupt goal of the tourism committee and. So at the last, including uh the committee member facilitated discussion of um different issues that we're facing tourism. Um in Cascade Box and in the gorge um and all of the different stakeholders that were facing different challenges. We're looking at residents' perceptions, we're looking at lodging operators' perceptions and tourism industry professionals. And so they spent here at the upper discussing all of those issues and then applying them to the strategic plan. And we had a draft of it at the committee. And so you have two documents here, one of them being the strategic plan, which I hope you're all familiar with. And then a little one pager at the back here. So there's a summary here of the different issues that are identified for Cascade Box. And then the applications to the strategic plan. Alright, so the tourism committee identified the following as the biggest and most important problems to solve relating to tourism in Cascade Box. Um it started with downtown revitalization, and so whether that was development or redevelopment, there's parking is a problem. In the middle of the big business areas, there's a lack of available retail spaces and entities, diversified beverage options. Um, most businesses close early and the customers want to have access to them. Uh there are not currently enforced requirements for ongoing maintenance or ton buildings where it could be some architectural plan that is being. Being overseen. Um, for welcoming in aesthetics, there's a lack of clear wayfinding signage. Outdoor spaces could be more inviting and useful if there were picnic tables and benches. Uh there's problems with the maintenance of current public art and there could be more public art installations. And um current public art, the one that was brought up specifically was the mural on the bridge. As far as seasonality goes, year-round economic activity. Um most residents are not invested in receiving direct economic benefits from tourism, so they perceive tourism as a burden. Uh we're experiencing substantially reduced visitation in the fall and winter. Winter recreation opportunities in Cascade Box are inconsistent. Businesses and event planners. Are likely to plan events in winter season, are unlikely to plan events in winter season due to unpredictable and dramatic weather patterns. And winter weather causes transportation issues such as I eighty four closures. Uh O dot has reduced maintenance on roads during the winter due to budget constraints. Uh we're also facing workforce issues, so housing costs have made it difficult for seasonal and service industry workers to afford to live in Cascade Box year-round. Low rental inventory makes it difficult to live in Cascade Box seasonally, and Cascade Box has a high cost of living with depressed wages. And the public safety concerns that were brought up were mostly about traffic. Um there's a possibility of a bypass or alternate route around town, and I will clarify here that um. What they were referring to was when I eighty four, there's a big backup when people get stuck in town. Um if you needed to go somewhere within town, it's very difficult. There's not a, you know, like a connecting road in any of the neighborhoods where you can circumnavigate any of that. And I know you all have experienced that, register for clarity. Uh there's also poor communication of traffic problems within town, congestion at the bridge, unsafe usage of pedestrian crosswalks. And high visitor volumes at certain destinations and low visitor volume at other destinations. And as far as non-violent crime, uh there's a high rate of car break-ins and special death railhazards. Now I think you might see the connection between most of these issues and a lot of your strategic issues. I think that they are, they were pretty well aligned. Um, so uh then the committee went through the strategic plan and they found active ways that they could support the strategic plan. And um goals that were not like a practical fit for the committee to do anything about, but they could express general support for. Um so the most, the best alignment is with the downtown revitalization goals of the strategic plan. So um the goal one of increasing participation in local economic development activities. Uh the committee proposes that they can best support this goal by encouraging more citywide collaborations that include businesses, residents, organizations, and tourists. This may include recruiting, inviting, or coordinating new events and encouraging more collaborative package deals. Um, for the second goal, improve awareness of Cascade Box Downtown District and its assets for residents and visitors. The tourism committee proposes that they can best support this goal by engaging more local participants in volunteer-led beautification events. Uh especially the ones facilitated by visiting organizations like the Hoka Groundskeepers Project, which is the cleanup that happens during P C T days. Uh goal three, improve the visual appeal of Cascade Box from when it is known as the most aesthetically appealing city in the Columbia Gorge. The tourism committee proposes that they can best support this goal by pursuing grants for permanent public art installations. Promoting and facilitating temporary public arts such as seasonal window art contests or table arts similar to the Stevenson Streetery. And they also propose they need to do more outside organizations involuntarism, like hosting a soft cleanup or unearthing. Uh the goals for code improvements are more support goals where there's general support for updating development codes. To include a work cohesive architectural plan for new development, enforceable requirements for ongoing building facade maintenance and long-term permits for food carts. Um and then making Cascade Box more business friendly. Uh the committee supports a comprehensive review of the city's codes regarding businesses. A business licensing program that collects consistently updated contact information with streamlined and improved communications. With local businesses for promoting tourism activities, collecting and coordinating events and reaching lodging operators with promotional opportunities. Uh the committee also supports more collaboration with the Port of Cascade Box and the Small Business Administration to promote development of locally owned businesses. Um, goals for public service, um we're also support, as far as the code enforcement program. The tourism committee expresses support for equitable code enforcement over complete-based code enforcement. Unfair targeting of new businesses while old businesses in vacant properties languish is not acceptable. And affordable housing goals, um address affordable and workforce housing needs. The committee expresses support for affordable and workforce housing solutions. Encouraging development of more mixed-use spaces such as retail spaces on street level with upstairs commitments would work to increase both retail space availability and housing options. And addressing infrastructure gaps that may restrict development of affordable affordable workforce housing. Uh the committee expresses support for upgrades to infrastructure such as electrical grade capacity upgrades in the water system and allowing more affordable.
Thank you for comprehensively going for this strategic plan goal and showing where you are. Your committee is willing to do the work actively and in support and. I'm fully on board.
I'm sort of acting with the Hood River Chamber of Business, and so I've kind of interacted with them in that capacity. And talking with kind of how they interact with tourism, you know, their number one focus is to build hotels in the winter time. They do nothing about some people coming this summer. And I thought that was one of my takeaways was that it was so laser focused, at least one hundred percent occupancy in hotels in the winter time. And then everything else is driven by that goal. And that kind of ties in with what we just talked about, about how citizens feel as though it's almost a burden, you know? Because I think what we deal with is the summer, you know, events, when things are already populated, then we have the summer events and it feels like it's too much. Um but meanwhile, we've got all these businesses that are really struggling in the winter time and hotels where they're occupied. And how would that affect our T L T funding if we could get more people on these beds? Is that a topic that you have talked about and thought about?
I think we, um, sorry. And something we really have focused on is how do we make our community feel more involved in. The community that we have. Um and um. Summer is a given. We have people here. We live in a beautiful place. We have the best hiking in the Pacific Northwest. And um. And the views, but winter is, you know, we're very quiet and and traffic is, can be. So in those upcoming months, like how we had mentioned the Earth Day event. And I've heard this from other people in our community, some towns such as Port Townsend, for one example. They are trying to work on events that incorporate their community in their off-seasons. Because if your community is involved, people from out of town are gonna come. And we have one of those places where people are gonna come to be with their friends and family to experience this event. And so if we can, you know, plan a fun event like Earth Day focus. Clean up our community, teach kids how to build, um you know, plant plants for bees. Build a little mason bee like home and that they can take to their home for their miracle next to their bee home that they just made. And have a connection to what we're trying to promote. People to come out here and experience, even though the weather might not be that great yet, but it's still. Still don't know if I, did I answer the question?
Well, I think, so, if I can paraphrase, I think that what I understood though is that you're, you are looking at ways to build events that are.
Bring your community together.
And specifically talking about events in the winter time, um that would be attractive for the residents, that would also bring some outside visitors as well.
Yeah, there's been some discussion around um like winter lighting parties and stuff too. Um, the most recent one was just Earth Day because that's what is in the works, but it doesn't mean that they're not thinking about it. I know one of the challenges we run into is that like Hood River is adjacent to winter recreation in a way that we are not. It's a little bit more of a stretch for people to stay here and then go out to Meadows for the day. Um, I know that like twenty extra minutes shouldn't be that long, but it.
It's a deal breaker though.
Yeah, the idea of trying to get some kind of winter advance that we can bring people into town, to the hotels. That's where the vote block is happening, more or less.
To really try to push traffic our way instead of going to government camp because the congestion on twenty six is so bad. And all, you know, the rest, you know, all the restaurants in the river, they get inundated when traffic is really bad. Do do people know that we're just twenty minutes further away and we've got these, we have restaurants too, you know? And and so some of those, they they have some discounts that they might make available to pass one, as an example, um to try to encourage them.
Yeah, but when they close eighty four, they close the, the Hood River.
Oh, I'm not talking about that. I was talking about when they're just on a park out there and that was, and uh they've got ten thousand visitors up there, just that one ski resort. And if you're heading through twenty six, your traffic is merging with people coming from Bend, Timberline, and Ski Bowl. And you end up with major traffic delays. And so they've done a lot with uh communication about those traffic delays to try to encourage people to choose to turn left. And then thirty five north to Hood River and through eighty four, um wouldn't be a good choice if eighty four was closed. But there is a lot of traffic that's coming through, and I think a lot of people just blow right higher over all town. And how do we maybe connect with some of those people this winter time? Uh may only be on weekends, but it's.
Well, I've lived here forever and I've had people actually come into Cascade and when I worked there. They drove by here for fifteen years and didn't even know we were here.
Yeah.
So we're just, even though we're right off the freeway, there's, there are people just driving by us all the time.
You make a good point, Pete, about maybe investigating collaborative um marketing with Meadows. Or what's bringing people to drive past us?
You get a few people to stop and I guarantee your word will spread.
And as we revitalize downtown and, uh you know, upgrade our lodging in some places. Then people will want to come back.
I know this isn't really our department, but planning and ordinance and building codes are. Reach out to Doug's and see if they want an an extension unit. So we have all these P C T hikers, you know, we're talking about having a storefront availability to people. And I know we don't have a year round, but if we could figure out our niche, if we had a good enough outdoor store. To be able to make it year round, it's help those people that are here in the summer and need some hiking pools. They, we have rent, summer rentals, we have outdoor, they can buy new socks, they can buy new gear from the P C T. Even in the winter, if they wanna pick up their snowshoes or cross country skis to go to the mountains, so they don't have to stop in the river on their way up.
Is there a shuttle that goes from Stevenson to Hood River? Like seeing that they do have a shuttle from here to Hood River, they have one. Cause a lot of, um, they have a shuttle to bring workers to Mount Hood. One of that would be like a collaboration.
You cap us in the Hood River and then you get onto the shuttle, yeah.
I just wanted maybe if we could do a collaboration with both sides of the river, maybe you would have.
We are the, I think if you're in Stevenson, you'll come over here.
There is a bus that goes from Stevenson here.
Yeah.
Escamania County.
Right.
Jordan, we don't have a business department or economic development role. And that, I know that's the place at the port right now and it takes a lot of communication. And I know Councilmember Compton brought up, uh this would be great to start with a business registry, but. And Main Street and the technical assistance from the state, if we get affiliated and if we stay at Connected Communities, then. We'll ask for more help, but um can help with some of this too. But what you're, what I hear you saying, like a big outdoor store. How does a committee that cares about that or a committee that cares, how do we help that come to fruition? Is it through port economic development, through all of us together?
It could be a little bit of everything. Yeah, I mean, I know the ports would need acquiring land downtown so they can actively try and sell it. Be proactive, it'd be part of the city, reducing any fees or giving them some kind of incentive to move in. And then also tourism, promoting their, the new business, so do a little bit of everything.
I remember that this forty five thousand dollar grant said something about wayfinding signs and parking assessments.
Correct.
And as well as code. Um, so making sure we're communicating so that you're not spending money or time on something that we might be able to or Main Street. And then, um. Um, yeah, I'm excited as well. I think we're all.
Getting back to your point, Pete, though, um the committee is doing um marketing strategy after they get their goals. So they haven't done as much work with the concepts of like the seasonal advertising indirects. Reaching to Meadows or anything like that, um because we're still like very much in the high level strategy and then we'll get them.
Reviving its goals.
Yeah, so once they have goals, then we can start to develop a strategy strategy.
And Jordan, is the city council going to make specific planning and city and tourism calls at our goal setting meeting?
I'd say you guys, you can, and then they will base off, well, it's in the strategic plan.
Right.
But you can delegate. But you can delegate, you can have a specific goal and delegate it to the tourism committee.
I, 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 I remembered somebody on the planning saying, we need our marching orders.
Correct, yes.
And, um, and I, is that what I just heard you say, Janice? When you get more specific goals, then you can focus more specifically.
Uh, yes, so this year was a proposal of what specific goals could look like from what you have in your strategic plan. Um, you're welcome to change and adjust those or throw it away and give us completely different things, um. But, um, once they have that, then they can do a more targeted approach. Being specific about like remembering after advertising for people to stop here during ski season.
Yeah, if one of our controls is to increase tourism and increase number of beds in, heads in beds, that activity would be delegated to myself, whoever's staff member and the tourism committee. They would do the labor work and then work that in council. But if, if that's one of your goals.
Sounds like we need to get council goals and then figure out and delegate where.
Correct, I think next year, these meetings will be in reverse where council will have their goal session early in mid-January. And then give marching orders to the committees.
And I love that you aligned this with our strategic plan. As Jordan said, that, that's what we're working from because it's what the community asks for. So, so to me, this is a really good guide for us to possibly tweak or get a little more specific. Um, what, you know, how do you interpret that as a council member? What do you see? Um, so thank you for that.
I think it really highlights how systemic a lot of these issues are too, where there's so much and there's so many moving parts that go into the problems that we're facing. Like it's not just like, oh, tourism needs to go out and buy a sign to fix wayfinding signage. It's like, oh no, we need to do so much work and it's gonna involve, you know, the port and the S B A. And, you know, it's not all gonna fall under tourism review.
And business owners and.
We talked, we said S B A and, you know, we've been talking Main Street, um, and I think tourism and business, they, they go hand in hand. And the way that we're doing it with our business association, you know, not associated with tourism and the city is very different from the way that the river does it. What do you have a couple of words about that?
It, it is, there are tourism members who want to be on the Main Street Committee. And if you ever have a chance to look at the Oregon Main Street website, you'll see how fabulous, fabulous things can happen. I know Emily went to the conference as well. And, uh, it, as Janice mentioned, it's all interconnected because we're a tourist destination. And our restaurants won't make it if we don't, we don't have enough people here to eat every day all the time. But, but our downtown revitalization is huge for keeping people walking downtown. Whether they come in on a cruise ship or they, we don't want them to just stop and get gas. We don't stop and get gas and eat and find that the grocery store is something they want to shop at and find that. So it's all interrelated and, and I'm enthused about this nonprofit organization. It is not just a business organization, it is a whole community organization, Main Street is a whole community. And, um, in fact, the current team is writing the application to move to the next level. Based on strategic plans, yes.
I was talking specifically about the small business association, like there's a business association, right? There, there's with Cascade Locks business owners.
Not yet, they want to, I've spoken with the three people that applied for it. Uh, five oh one C three, and they want to merge it into the Main Street. As did Stevenson and most Main Streets. Because it fits the goals and Main Street comes with a forty year old model and technical support from the state. And, and I just listened to two days of conferences from about thirteen state agencies and three foundations who have grants and loans for construction remodeling, all the things for, for assessing potential hazards on sites. They don't have to be real hazards, but any older building or lot that appears to have hazards or a developer doesn't want to buy it, we can get money to have that assessed and a plan written and possibly money to remediate or help. Um, there's so much out there, but they said, every one of them came, Odette was there too. And, uh, saying, we love Main Street organizations. If we get a grant application from a Main Street organization, it is more competitive because we trust that they are within this national system. Anyway, I feel like I'm speaking about a nonprofit too much, but yes, we're, we're hoping to collaborate. The port has said they approve at the city, we also sent a letter of approval. It's just one more piece to the puzzle of people working on this similar.
I guess I, but I guess it was specifically about the idea of having a chamber, working with tourism.
So the difference between Main Street organizations and chambers of commerce is the type of nonprofit they are. So a chamber of commerce is a five oh one C six and Main Street organizations are usually a five oh one C three. Um, and that just means that they fulfill different functions even like at their gate level, um.
So this, so Stevens, Stevens in Washington, small business association is affiliated with Main Street. They are a Main Street organization. They also have a chamber that does other things. Um, and they work together, you can not vote.
And so, and so where does the chamber fall in that organization? Is it part of tourism and part of the city committee then?
It's mostly my understanding, I suppose each chamber is organized differently. But when I've been involved with chambers, it's business owners, I don't know. I, I mean, sure, they want to promote tourism, but I don't, I don't know.
The director of the Chamber of Commerce in Hood River is, is paid through the chamber, which is part of the city.
Yeah, there's one, usually one main person that's paid for this, yeah.
But they're, and they are, so the employee is my point. That's what is different and, um, but a lot like the tree lighting ceremony they do, uh, fireworks. Uh, they've got the, the display competitions they do for the windows. That's all run through the chamber with the goal of encouraging tourism. You know, it's businesses that recognize the value of getting heads in beds. And their specific focus is to try to drive efforts to get.
And you can also be a member of the chamber just by being a, a person of the community. You know, they have memberships, you have pay to be a part of the chamber. So, you know, everybody that, you know, there's different levels of involvement in the chamber.
And different titles and different towns do different things, I'm sorry to point out. So the small business association that I spoke with that was forming in Cascade Locks did not want to be a chamber. They wanted to be an S B A and learning about Main Street, they wanted to fold into that. And tourism, like I don't know that Hood River has a tourism habitification committee such as ours does. So that's probably where the T L T funds go. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know why.
They, they go to the chambers.
Right, so that's why they're doing what our T L, our tourism habitification is doing. And we are smaller than Hood River and, um, appreciate the volunteers. And, and exciting that we have a paid consultant on this committee for this work. And Main Street is supposed to have a paid consultant within three years or we cannot keep our status. So that's where it's different, is that's where that, and we're still here. And.
I guess that's where I saw potentially a place where we could move forward though. Was it if we were to use T L T funds to pay for a director to run our Chamber of Commerce and also is engaged with tourism? That could be a more holistic approach at trying to take care of tourism and economic development.
But if, if you took the word chamber away, instead of we use our T L T funds to pay an executive director to run the Main Street Small Business Association to focus on tourism, um, then, then, then that model works as well. Like in Stevenson, I don't know if you've seen most of, many of the events, there are Main Street events supporting tourism.
Wonderful.
Yeah, and you brought in that report. So I see what you're saying, but I, I, the word chamber doesn't have to be a part of it. It's just a title, again.
Well, I guess the difference though is that if you've got an S B A that's run by private, or, you know, businesses that are not directly tied to tourism, then they're not working together as cohesively as if they're under one umbrella.
If you have, um.
Getting into that, how you move your umbrella.
Right, and if you have members on both committees sharing and communicating, just, it's just like the port. And I've had extensive conversations with commissioners and executive director on our, how are we ensuring that we're all communicating? You wanna buy something downtown, do we know about that? Are we, so we don't waste our time and how can we support that? Do we want code wise or, and I know we're all working on that, but it's, it's happening, I think it's happening. And I, yes, I think things are gonna shift in the next few years. I'm just so excited now.
So we're members of the Hood River County Chamber, can they not help us with any of this stuff?
Oh, then I don't believe there's a Hood River County, it's Hood River Chamber of Commerce.
So the visit Hood River is the Hood River County Chamber of Commerce and they do represent the whole county. They're actually having their February meeting in Cascade Locks, um, Thursday the twenty second on the block. Uh, so that is a resource that we can work with as far as, um, I, I mean, I have every other weekly meetings with the other tourism people. So like I talk to Katie every other week, um. Are you hoping for more partnerships with them to develop from this? Or are we looking for more information about structurally how they?
You were saying, why couldn't we lean on them to get some help for how they.
I mean, rather than, we're in a position where we're trying to do Main Street and we want a chamber. Well, maybe we can't do both at the same time right now.
No, that's all what I think.
Yeah, so can we get the chamber to listen to us and move our party?
We're members of the River Chamber, um, the goodies, and we have access to them and their resources as needed. Um, what are you hoping that will get out of working with the chamber? And like more collaborative advertising opportunities, more ideas, working with them on, um.
How do we get our bins full in the winter time?
If we get our bins full in the winter time, right.
Maybe, I feel like, you know, that would be helpful to get more business and, uh, more people here when we're not busy.
I mean, yeah, in the short term, it might be beneficial to go under their umbrella instead of making our umbrella. But long term, I don't think, that's up to how this group evolves, but.
Currently, there are thirteen diverse board members wanting to do Main Street. And at least four committee members, um, business owners, landowners, um, community members. And I'm excited to try to see this through. And, and I have spoken with the director of Stevenson Main Street, Kelly, the pay director. And yes, T L T funds in other towns have been used to help pay the main director. Cause they have, it's all on five oh one C three, there's reporting that's done, it's run through the Oregon Department of Rec. So it's well, what is the term? Overseen, they oversee and make sure that you're doing what their Main Street goals are. It's been proven over forty years because it's the national Main Street model as well. And so Stevenson does have a chamber and a Main Street. And so they each work together and separately, and they have a port and a city council. And she shared with me sometimes who's doing what, but it takes a little bit of time for everybody to find who's communicating and how that works. And I certainly know that this team that's committed to the Main Street right now has a lot to do just to get this going. And I've been collaborating, talking, Janice should share things with me that I needed for the application. And, um, and, um, we're getting more inspiration from Native American artists and business owners. Just talking about Main Street, so that's exciting.
And would they be able to, um, make sure you're able to give any feedback on what we could bring to the February meeting with Hood River County Chamber? What would benefit?
Um, that's pretty quick.
Hood River County Chamber isn't the Main Street organization and, um, my understanding is most of them are not super familiar with Main Street. Um, I don't know what you would be bringing to them that they would need. So the, the connection that I'm seeing between what Pete is saying and what Denise is saying is that in the future, perhaps you're hoping that, um, the city can either employ a tourism person or use a vendor that is within a small business administrative or association. Um, I think that that would be, so the museum is currently your vendor. But when the next time that it goes out for a proposal, you could choose to designate that to go to a different organization. Um.
I wish we had a Katie here, right? I mean, that's, you know, it, it, really, she does so much for the chamber, the city. And the way that they're able to support that through T L T funds and her position pays for itself ten times. Right, um, so that's where I feel like we'd benefit from having somebody that position that could help bring, um, bring in additional funding.
And we have a Janice here, we pay twenty hours a week for the museum and Janice. Um, and I'm excited about that, so we have a half time tourism, they consulting group.
Sorry, I didn't mean to sound like.
And that is, um, this is, the position is new. I mean, not the position is new, but her running it. And already I see great things coming out and I think we're gonna see a lot more. And, and as Janice mentioned, in the next iteration in two years, when the contract comes up, we can decide. And, um, and, you know, I am, anybody here, we are members of the West Columbia Board of Chamber of Commerce, which has had lots of social tier dinners here. And they travel a lot, they don't go to Hood River, so you, we can go, anybody here can go to that. If you're a member of the city of Cascade Locks, which you are, and they will encourage you to join as a business owner if you want. But, and I presume, we're members of the Hood River Chamber?
We're members of the River Community and West Columbia.
So when I showed up, I know Emily came one time to a chamber meeting and support committee there. That you just say, my city's a member, I wanna be here, hear what's going on. And so, so we still can engage, um, to some degree. I don't know what their bylaws are for how many things you're gonna attend or, or seminars you go to or whatever. If you don't, individually.
I think especially things for Main Street, the Main Street conferences. It just involves so much, so the planning committee has budget. And they have a budget to go out and learn too. So, um, see what would be, why you would be restricted. So I know council member Keller had his.
I guess, what I hear you saying, Pete, do you go in the Main Street or do you go chamber? And I feel like what I hear everybody saying is they do mostly the same thing. And so which direction should we go? And I think people are still arguing which direction to go rather than jumping on the train and, but put all our energy and see what happens. I just, I, well, I, I, I wanted to clarify, my only question was about the S B A. We have, we either have to have an S B A or we have to have a chamber to be part of the Main Street program at the next level, is that right?
You, chambers usually, I don't think are, no, you don't have to have an S B A. You, a Main Street committee is formed and I'm happy to share more. And we're going to have a public meeting as soon as we get our, you know, hopefully we get accepted to the next level. And if we don't, we move as we did last year and try, this team will try to do more, it won't just be me. But, cause we can move from Connected Communities, I think, not at the city level, but we're hoping we get affiliated status. And it's, it's, it is an entity in its own, but it fulfills many duties of a chamber. It is, fulfills many duties of a tourism paid consultant if there wasn't such one in town. It fulfills many duties of, it's, it's a four tiered approach, which includes promotion, organization, uh, downtown revitalization, because it's, it's, it's not, it's not as inclusive as Cascade Locks Tourism because it is focused on Main Street. And it, it's happening, there's no, should we go either way, it's moving forward.
To answer your question though, I wasn't, uh, wasn't suggesting that we did a chamber and not do Main Street. What I was suggesting is why are we, you know, I I think it'd be beneficial by a chamber. Uh, and as opposed to having S B A that's run by business owners that are too busy to run an S B A effectively.
I think chambers are business run as well.
No, uh, they have members that are. That's different.
And a city, that's a city.
They have a director that manages.
That's being paid by T L T funds. And we're currently only using thirty percent of our T L T funds to fund our tourism department, and we can't afford to have a director to run a chamber. Do you see the issues?
No, because we have named it differently, we have spent tw- twenty hours a week on a director of our. Tourism, I, on a paid consultant for tourism in Lua by another name. By another name as the same person in the chamber, and she's just new here. And, and so you're not familiar with what that role can do, which is probably quite similar. To the role of the person paid tourism, and T L T funds can be used to pay that entity, that entitled person. In an organization called Main Street, or in a chamber, or in an independent contract, so. Yes, maybe in five years, we, we decide we want it under the umbrella of Chamber. But I don't think it reduces our paid consultants' abilities or the committee's abilities to not be called a Chamber. Council member, sorry, you had.
Yeah, I was, I think we're going in a little bit of some circles, because the chamber, like chambers have. Certain responsibilities and they're, they more, they're kind of economic development of their area, so they're basically our port. Uh, the port of Cascade Locks is a public port which has a tax region and a region to like. Cert, which is bigger than Cascade Locks by a large margin, we're a little portion inside of it, but. We're the only population inside of it, really, um. And that what their responsibility is, is for economic development, so making a chamber. Would not necessarily make sense, whereas like the business organization. Would, that is supported by a tourism committee, because we already have a tourism committee. Which we operate kind of like the River's Chamber of Commerce, we don't take dues from businesses. But we could if we made the right role laws or or ordinances or created a chamber.
I mean, that's a, that's a naming thing, like, you know, it's not a naming thing, it's a, it's a, it's an actual business, it's a, it's a, it's a tax organization. And, and, you know, it's that you could, uh, the tourism committee could, like technically could do, like. They're, they're running the same. Things like, just because it's like, yes, there's another tax organization, that's a, not a. Semantic thing, but it's.
It's a real thing.
Yeah, we, I know that, and just, there, we're talking about things that do the same roles, but we're not, we're not there yet, like. To make a chamber, we would have, to make a chamber the way that the River does, we have to basically stop funding the tourism committee. No, yes, we fund the tourism committee, all of the T L T funds that we. Are willing to give them, because the rest of it goes into our budget for everything else.
That's right, that's, that's, that's why, that, I guess, that's why I'm just bringing up, they're robbing, you know, the tourism committee of funds that they really should. You know, we were taking, we're appropriating those funds for administration of city business, and those ones.
Then we need more money in the city, but we don't have that, so we'd have to take care of it.
How do we get that without tourism?
And I, I would disagree, I think we are using some of that tourism. To pay for things that tourism, we might ask tourism to pay for anyway, such as infrastructure, such as. Um, so, 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 yes, this is a longer call, and I see where you're looking. Two, five years in the future, and here we are now, and I'm excited to work with what we have now. And we have an excited um, group of volunteers, um, hoping to move forward with.
I think that's what we really need to do, is we really should be looking twenty years down the road, and that's the purpose of our long-term strategic plan, right? Is to give us those high beings to look further into the future, but we've also got a lot of property on the port that's, you know, designated for resort development. It's not, and we've got to be thinking longer term.
Well, you know, and that, that, I love your, I love your point there, we need to be looking twenty-five years down the road. Um, the city of Independence, where I went to the talk, the tourism Main Street Conference. Um, they made a strategic plan.
No, go ahead.
Um, but they had, they made a street, strategic plan twenty-five years prior to this event that we had this conference. And they were now looking at the effects of what that strategic plan had done for them. And they had completed all of their goals, they just got a new city coordinator and um. They looked, they pulled out all of the maps and all of the plans for their downtown, and everything had been, they followed the plan. And now they're at this point where they now get to create a new strategic plan, you know, they've. And, and the town was just so wholesome, you know, and it was so, it was nice to see. All of the revitalization that they had done throughout the little town there and, you know, make those buildings that are historical, historical. And they're like, it was, you, I don't know, yeah, it was, it was good to see the twenty-five years, at least.
We're not kind of small.
For another town, they had nothing before their strategic plan, but now they have just this great town full of shops. I went walking around and looked at little antique shops and looked at little boutiques and. You, I ate, ate a sandwich in a house that was a historical house, you know, and it was now a cafe. And like, those are little things that like, we have opportunities for here, but how to be, how to be or. Formulated, how do we get our ordinances in order, how do I, how do we promote that kind of business as a city? Because the infrastructure to build things like that is so limited. And that's why we need a twenty-five year strategic plan to help. Create that future.
I was just gonna make a suggestion that council directs the tourism committee to research essentially what their future looks like. Is it, is it a chamber, is it Main Street, maybe it's we go under, visit Hood River as a brand, Hood River tourism committee goes away. What is the best option for tourism in Cascade Locks, don't leave any tombstone unturned, that'd be my suggestion.
Yeah.
I said, we've been in a circular conversation here, but ma- make an action, we're not gonna sign anything tonight.
I think that I already think that, uh, uh, pretty, like you said, we've been going around and around, but actually turn that into something constructive. So that, I think that's great.
And, and I would add to that, that council members make a goal for where they see tourism.
I think in China, we have, we find, we have a strategic plan, this is great, but it's, it's like the chicken or the egg, what comes first? And lots and lots of logistics, so we, we want that, you know, heads and beds, you know, um. I don't use that term in healthcare, but we, we want revitalization, we want people to come and visit in the winter. We, we need all of these things to grow and sustain ourselves, but it's, it's the challenge of how does that work? We can't put out a big campaign for everyone to come, if we've got blue tarts on roads downtown. And how, I don't know how many businesses are dilapidated and everything, so we have to have a really, this is part of. Starting a lane of really good foundation, so we can improve the, you know, winter time. We can do all of these things, so um, I like the Jordan, what you said about tourism and.
Maybe, I, I think this is the most beautiful time in the gorge, here's the winter, you know, and, and, and Amy's shaking her head.
Fargo Ross near the side river.
I think we've got something here that we can market and sell, you know, I really think we've got to change that perspective and make people wanna come and see the gorge when it's raining and drippy and.
I think there's things that certainly we can do, it doesn't mean we don't try and get people to come out here. But, and it's not like we're gonna wait five years till downtown, that's perfect, so we've got to find a happy medium, that's what.
And what are, you know, the port, the city, tourism, beautification, and Main Street's goals for what do we want to see? What would help a covered food cart area so you can stand and look at the beauty without being in the rain? You know, I mean, Tragdell, Native Wood Village did it, you know, what are we, what are we? And everybody's gonna have a different vision, and they're in our strategic plan, all those different visions, but it's, it. We, it's apparent everywhere what Jenna said, we need downtown revitalization. We need those empty buildings to be revitalized, we need infill in the spaces where once upon a time in the thirties. Or whatever, there were theaters and bowling alleys and Big D's. Gas station and mechanic and, um, and we need to, the, the historical and cultural. Assets that are Cascade Locks need to be celebrated and, you know, promoted and accessible. In a way that people can come for that as well, so you're right. I, I do believe in the long-term picture, and I think we're right here, and I'm just so excited that what we have now. With this, and I'll send you information about Main Street, we're back, I'm a big meeting, but I've been waiting to see if we. Got accepted to the affiliated status with that whole community, and um, but nonetheless. Business owners, volunteers, landowners support the city, the tourism committee, the planning committee, our new grant. To me, it's all focusing toward yay, this is our great plan, and we have the strategic plan that we're from, so thank you.
How's the consensus of Jordan, which, and Janice, would you like to comment on that?
Uh, I heard two actions from this discussion, one being what Jordan suggested of having the committee assess how to proceed. And then another to create a marketing plan that includes off-season and focuses on off-season.
Both of you know the same line.
Yeah.
The consensus on.
Can I just throw out an idea? Yeah.
Please.
Well, I think it was Emily that was talking about um, having a shop with ski poles and all the, um, equipment for snow time. One of the problems that we have here in town, or anything that's not a restaurant, is seasonal. So I don't know if there's something that can be looked at, um, letting people know that there's a building that. If you're a summertime type of thing, like the e-bikes, the e-bikes, right, and then. Six months later, shift it and let the ski season take over the building, I mean, and that way. You don't go bankrupt, I mean, you can make, you can make it here, I mean, it would be seasonal, but they would know that in advance.
Yeah, so you, I'm sorry. So you're saying, um, like a split lease agreement of sorts?
Yeah.
Um, so.
That might allow more.
A certain extended amount of lease time under this bank of years, you know, because most people run, reach a space for. Right, a couple of years, um, but it would be at six month intervals.
Yeah. Well, that's. Couple businesses, I know the um, Bonneville gift shop goes down there during the summertime, and then I think they close. And then I don't know what comes in after that into that building or stays empty, but.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
It's just an idea, I was, because I know that's why I'm here, staying in business for twelve months.
And then the other takeaway would be that said our goals, we give them goals, right, that was our council's action items, just to. With goals on paper.
Do you wanna? I wanna hear a consensus.
Okay, yes, so the two actions so far for the committee are, one, to assess um, how to continue. If they are to stay as a city committee or potentially outsourcing to a chamber or Main Street organization. And the act, second action is to create a marketing plan that includes a focus on winter and other off-season opportunities. Yes.
I'm sorry, so you said marketing on off-season, so that would just be promote or also. Create opportunities, like working on events, because. I feel like this town is super right in the summer with all the outdoor recreation activities, but in the winter with. What is right now downtown is.
Do what we can with what we have in the marketing plan, whether that includes, you know, paid promotions. Magazine ads, getting influencers out here, or planning uh, Christmas night events, or um. I don't know, like a big solstice fire party where we all burn our Christmas trees. There's lots of, like, the Canadian, as long as it's within a strategic marketing plan.
I love it, yeah, and you've seen in other cities that Milwaukee, Kansas, Solstice Party, they have the like, they have the. Umbrella parade, which is a big, I hate feeling it was.
Good parade, we used to have Sturmer days, we used to have Rock and Gem show, yeah, I don't know, Gem show was off.
Was that for not by tourism?
I don't know what happened, it's all of a sudden we turned into a ghost town. I heard, well, I talked to a lot of vendors like me so many of them, they said that they, they had raised the rent space for the park. I think we should try again. And the Lions, right? Yeah, the Lions had a lot to do with a lot of the events, and I'm also. They were really active members and had lots of. For how we can get that around the camp, but that by help tourism, we have to lie in something else.
Alright, yeah, I think you would need to reform all of the, oh, yes, something, um. I think that there's different organizations that can host in similar capacities as far as planning events and stuff. But one of the things that tourism can do is communicate with those groups and say, hey, if you're growing a big. Canoe rally or, I mean, it might not be Sturmer Days or whatever, it used to be here. And it might be that we're talking to somebody who does manage rock and gem shows and saying, yes, you could come to the park and do that, but. Um, as far as like advertising and attracting group events, that's something that thoughts over the committee.
And I like your idea of building on what we have and the asset base. I did see, and I think I mentioned to somebody at Skamania Lodge, they have a magazine that tells their clients what's going on in the gorge. And their events, what usually happens in Carson or Stevenson, and we weren't in there, so. So if this committee can help. It is one of my goals, reach out to the organizations that already exist, basically restaurants, I think, I don't think the hotels do many events. Um, and the fire department, whether it's at the parade or even at City Hall, and say, what do you usually do in April? What, can you, can you commit to a date now, so we can do some forward promotion for cross promotion? Because even. I spoke, I got to know the Stevenson Chamber and the Stevenson Main Street, they all share an office. This year, um, did some disability advertising with them when my sister was here, who uses a wheelchair. And you did that, I think Janice told me about that, so we sent pictures of shoes, and then they said. We will cross promote, but they have these sort of way early pre-deadlines. Um, and I think what you're noticing, Sophie, is that some of the restaurants don't commit and they don't, but if they can think ahead, I mean, the. We are going to have a fire department parade, we know we are, we are going to light the lights at the circle park. If we can put that on a calendar, then it helps them to do an event related to that and talk to all the restaurants. Are we going to have a last minute shop at Thunder Island and Gorgeous have Hometown Christmas, okay, let's. Is to get these people to commit to a date, I think it's better to say, oops, moved it to this date, than to not. Be on all that cross promotion, like the Hood River cross promotion, Meadows, everybody wants to tell their people. What's going on, I mean, because there's the Carson Resort. And Skamania Resort that bring in people that um, want to. Sure, they wanna come see the little lights here. Want to, sure, they wanna come see the little lights here, the fire parade, especially if every restaurant town has a. Fire parade, drinker, food special, you know, that. Building on the asset, you might be, as well as Main Street, the coalescing. Group that helps. These smaller businesses, God bless them for being here and doing things to. To plan ahead, you help them. I mean, somebody did the. Drink walk, cocktail walk that included many businesses and I don't know. Not here.
The fall cocktail walk for this organized by the restaurants.
Right, so um.
So question, yes, for you, on the city website, how are events, are events attached that somehow? That say like notifications, people can go to the city of Cascade Box and where, how do they find out what's going on? I know there's, I see the calendar come out, but what?
So that calendar is attached to tourism's website, so that's just cascadehawke.com, that is not connected to the city's website.
We don't.
We have a name tag or anything?
Yeah, I mean, like when you go on the tourism committee page, I.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we have a link on the city website?
Correct. We're on a Monday, pretty much through, if you go through departments, it's got tourism on there.
Okay. Might be helpful to, would that be helpful to look at the city website? I know any, if I pull up any city, there's usually a button or something. It's mostly chambers, but there's direct links to it, so you don't have to go through and find. Alright, would that be helpful?
Page. We have a committee's page and that's where it's on the committee's.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think what you were suggesting was instead of having to dig through this, uh, the committee page to find the link to tourism's website.
Big button down there.
Very good mention.
Yeah, curious about events that city, you know.
Right.
Having it more easy to find.
Yeah. And the way that that calendar is structured right now doesn't let itself to a lot of really good access for pre-planning. It, it's a PDF that. Is posted, you know, a couple of days before the month begins. So if we were to implement um a better community calendar, that would have had a little bit more functionality and a little more foresight and planning into it. That would be amazing, but.
Yeah.
So yeah.
We're, I was saying, we had, we got the basic package with very limited extra stuff, so.
But if it's promoting tourism, dollars we use to.
Probably.
Is this, is this something tourism would chase down or you're wishing the city would?
Uh, no, 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 community calendar type of thing, that's also something that we would do, not the city council.
Oh. So maybe we're asking them to research a digital community calendar and the costs and. If you have time to do that or how the outreach. For those.
But it really ties the thing directly into many of the goals that you identified, right, about um getting that. Our residents also excited about these events as well and how do we do that? I don't know, so it seems like that would really.
And there's things that can be planned way out, you know, BCT days or AHA or community picnic or, there's lots of things that can go on. Way in, way in advance. Um, Councilwoman Keller, do you have her?
Oh, yeah, I was just saying, when I've gone to various like Airbnbs or Sun River or something, generally speaking, there's a binder or some kind of magazine. That says in January, like it's a generic thing that states in the group, in January, this is generally what happens around the area. And it's not something specific that says September twenty third, it says the third weekend and like BCT days is like the third weekend in Ojas.
Right.
And so it's a generic document that expresses what's going on, huh? Sometimes I get excited, oh, look, it's there, water balloon festival.
I am so, but the, the people that own that, I was asking, would just absolutely adore something like that. They are always looking to help their, the people that run their Airbnb here in Cascade Box. Help them find something to do to be like a part of it while they're here. It's so cute. I really appreciate that about them.
So one of the things that Cascade Box has historically struggled with for that is consistency. Um, I don't think that where we are now, we could make a document like that. That guarantees that in December, we always hear this thing. Just because.
We're just.
It keeps, and it's, it's one of the things that.
But there's not much, right?
But I think there's different things, like this, this is happening.
Yeah.
The, the PTO holiday marketplace is happening, that they're already planning for these events, like.
Yeah.
I, there is stuff that's happening.
Yeah, so reaching out maybe to see if you can come up with, and then. I got jealous that the Dallas Den was doing the eagle nesting and I thought, we have eagles, why aren't we doing the eagle thing? But maybe the natural things in January and December, you'll see eagles nesting, mating in, in. Switches over, I don't know when it switches over to Oscar, it's May, June, I don't remember, but it's an intro, we have some interesting culture and the fishing, our Native American fishing. Um, and all fishing, but that is a cultural heritage piece. We don't ever talk about like the sturgeon season, you may see sturgeon fisher people, you may see. Um, when is? Um, and ultimately, like you said, with the um. The ski poles, you know, if, well, if we start anyway. So some of the natural things that happen, like you can walk.
Did you know you can walk and drive great falls year round in front of the downtown, from Riverdale?
I think that you have the base we could get into, but it's lots of logistics, you know. Topics, but we don't wanna get too much into the.
Go all night.
Uh, Councilmember Proctor.
I just wanted, I just wanted to say that in my research of like what do cities and stuff, and I just looked up Portland in the winter because they have similar. Climate to us in the winter, but they've been raining. Wet all the time because it's indoor food festivals. And music. That's, there's, those are the two things people do and go to places that are. Like people will go to Portland to go to like a. Some kind of food festival. In the winter. People will go to Portland to see music in the winter. We don't have anything like that planned and I think it'd be good to like maybe start thinking about trying to put a winter food festival of some sort. In our calendar. And try to get organized so that, and like, I don't know which food do we choose to do or like something, but like. That's what peo, that's what draws people in the winter is a warm, warm and good your belly. And something pretty to look at.
So how is it communicated currently that what's happening in Cascade Blocks to individuals uh spending the night here in Cascade Blocks? At the hotels and Airbnbs?
Uh, the hotels provide access to those flash reports and those are usually up to date. Um. They have a different process at each hotel, um. As far as like making brochures and stuff available, but that like, um, just curious, yeah, Cascade with help with the other little holders that they put in the rooms whereas. Best Western is a little bit more formalized with their um little racks and. Access to. It's more passive, right? And it's a little bit of a calendar.
Best Western is to give like a free breakfast or a discount over to. Bridgeside with, you know, so they would team up with Bridgeside.
I believe they still do that. I have that stayed there for sure too.
Yeah, they do. I think they, um, they want.
They want to associate.
Yeah. I saw in Trout Lake, they have a little sign with the QR code, what's going on, so even if it was a document. That you added to the QR, because most people have a cell phone now.
Trout Lake's got a lot of music.
And they, but they have it in a hall no greater than our city hall hall, Trout Lake Hall.
No way. Sorry, there's a band I really wanna see, like see them like, because.
They get these great bands up there, but they, I think they can, like, and they show movies there, like we do movies, the Port does movies in the. Summer, but you're right, Sean, it could be in the pavilion or here or at the school gym.
We have, we have a dry gym that's used infrequently that I don't know about the acoustics of it, but.
Yeah.
It, that's perfect.
I think they'll play basketball in there.
Anyway, so, so helping, we don't wanna put too much on tourism committee, but helping. Seed ideas. That you get excited about that would help bring folks in the winter and maybe. Um, you know, partnering with businesses, the port and or the Main Street, you know. Um, who wanna be a part of it, because certainly. Cascade Ale House. I think several of our restaurants have provided off-site food, you know, for sale, so thank you for that.
There's one.
Can we do everything?
But thi- this is a thirty thousand foot plan, this meeting was meant to be around fifteen, twenty thousand foot, most of the meetings been about client foot level. And we cannot take any action on, if we have hard data in the plan that goes forward, so I feel like we're just kinda spinning our wheels here.
Okay.
That's the first, we need to go, okay. All great conversations, we're not.
How about the tourism committee? Do you have questions or requests of us?
What would you like?
If we provided a document of what we're doing patient figure?
I have it on the next council agenda to talk about setting a council goal setting date. Hopefully sometime in February, so we can get this done and we can move forward and we can put a budget together, but. I guess once that is done, it will go out to the committees and they will have their marching first.
How does that sound?
It's instructive, yeah, so I, I, and I'm hoping to have the council setting for sometime in February, it'll definitely get stopped by a council at the March eleven meeting.
Little resolution and then you can move on. That's my.
Sound good?
It's a hard meeting.
That's a hard meeting.
Goals, yeah. But it's hard, it is hard and then we haven't done the budget class and done.
And we have a plan to go off. And I just.
That's right, we've got some, we've got some.
I really appreciate this, but.
I do.
So, I mean, I haven't seen. Anything like this when I was accountable for two years and. They left, I really thank you for it and it's well thought out, you know, I've got my legs fit in the strategic plan.
And I, I see the visit Cascade Blocks more frequently than I remembered seeing them for, for that diversity of interest, whether it's the Sturmer. Or um some natural things, not just an event, and I really appreciate that as well. Um. That I feel that there has been. I love this, love your onboarding packet, love your goal setting, um. And what I'm seeing with the flash report and the visit Cascade Blocks. Um, and then I, oh, I just wanna say I'm a big fan, if you ever have to go to the city for this, of your. Attending the conferences, attending the trainings, learning those great ideas, like Emily coming back from independence with the strategic plan that by their Main Street. Um, what I heard. From somebody's. Uh, oh, in the grant writing tips class, they said. Have you made those relationships? Have you made those relationships with the people you're asking money from? And they all go to those conferences to try to have you go to their booth, whether it's. The park and rec or whatever, whatever. That's hard to think about Main Street, an LOC conference, but.
I think in the ways we don't wanna.
I just want them to know that they can plan for that too, conferences and I know there's something coming.
And that's something in the budget, I think it was two thousand set for training and everything, you might need more. Than that if you're planning on to be able to go to travel and more training or.
Um.
I don't know.
So, the only conference that the committee has coming up right now is Storican Governor's Conference on Tourism.
Mm-hmm.
Um, everyone who was going to attend that has been awarded scholarships of at least four hundred dollars to cover their um registration and a couple of books have been awarded lodging as well. Um, so I'm not concerned with meeting that budget.
I feel like two thousand is okay.
We probably can't to go to that.
Or just one.
For your school. As a breakout.
We did spend money on the Main Street conference, but. There's.
That's enough.
Oh, yeah, that's enough money or do you feel like to need more? For training.
We have that done budgeted.
Yeah, so I don't have nothing for you.
Okay. Alright. Well, Jordan, you have anything to add?
Nope, I'm good. I have my take facts, winter focus, future tourism committee and updating the tourism ordinance are the three things. I had this meeting.
Janice?
Uh, those were the same three things that I got out of this year, so kind of, I will run it like that.
Any other comments? Any questions? No, most individual.
I think most individual.
I said.
All in favor?
I know you need to do a little poll vote, alright, just.
Thank you all, I'm so excited.